Call the meeting of October 11th, 2022 of the DuPage County Board to order. And may I ask, if I may, ask Member Jim Zay to lead us in the pledge, and then please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have, we're glad to welcome Pastor Andrew Hugan from the DuPage Care Center to lead us in invocation. Pastor?
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning to all. For our invocation this morning, I just wanted to share with you a quick reflection that I'm quite fond of, and then a prayer. My Lord God, I have no idea where I am going. I do not see the road ahead of me. I cannot know for certain where, I cannot know for certain where it will end, nor do I really know myself. And the fact that I think I am following your will does not mean that I'm actually doing so. But I believe that the desire to please you does, in fact, please you. And I hope I have that desire in all that I am doing. I hope that I will never do anything apart from that desire. And I know that if I do this, you will lead me by the right road, though I may know nothing about it. Therefore, I will trust you always, though I may seem to be lost and in the shadow of death. I will not fear, for you are ever with me, and you will never leave me to face my perils alone. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, enlighten our minds and hearts to do your will as we serve the people of DuPage County. Allow kindness, generosity, fortitude, patience, wisdom, good counsel, and care for those most in need to shine forth in the decisions we make. Grant us grateful hearts for all your graces bestowed. Continue to bless the county board members, all staff and employees of this county, our families and loved ones, most especially the residents of the care center, and all the people of DuPage County. May these leaders be great lights of your goodness. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin?
Here.
Member Covert?
Here.
Member Desart?
Here.
Member DeCiani?
Here.
Member Eckoff?
Here.
Member Garcia?
Here.
Member Hart?
Here.
Member Kuduski?
Here.
Member Laplante?
Here.
Member Ozog?
Here.
Member Phillips?
Here.
Member Pachalsky?
Here.
Member Renahan?
Here.
Member Rutledge?
Here.
Member Schwartzy?
Here.
Member Selman?
Here.
Member Tornatori?
Here.
And Member Zay?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Onto the Order of Chairman's Report. We have a couple of presentations here. First and foremost, I'd like to invite our friend Dave McGowan, who's here to join me, as well as Member Renahan, Megan Sheebic, and Sarah O'Donnell, if you'd join me up here at the podium. As you make your way here, I'd like to share with all of us that, there you are. Hi, Dave, how are you? Good, very good. It's nice to see everybody. Today, we take a moment to celebrate 17 community service organizations that will receive $3.8 million in grants for their proposals to transform lives here in DuPage County. Today's action marks the second set of grants distributed by this board as part of the DuPage Community Transformation Partnership. I think it's one of the more significant things that we've accomplished here together, working together, the board, and during these last few years. In January, we agreed to allocate $10 million over five years to assist our DuPage residents struggling in the aftermath of the COVID pandemic. As Health and Human Services Committee Chair, I want to thank Julie Renahan for shepherding this partnership, acting as the county board's representative in the process. We also welcome Dave McGowan, President and CEO of the DuPage Foundation, and Grant Committee Chair Megan Sheebic today. Member Renahan, I'm going to let you take it away and talk a little bit about the grants that these organizations will receive.
Thank you, Chairman, and thanks to the DuPage Foundation for being such a great partner. The work we've accomplished in a short time is just absolutely remarkable. And the transformation grants we announced today bring our total to nearly $5 million distributed this year. In June, we awarded more than $1 million in intermediate intervention grants to 16 social service, non-for-profit organizations serving DuPage County, residents in the area of food insecurity, housing instability, mental health, and substance use disorder. Now, in October, thanks to federal ARPA funds directed by this board, we award a second set of transformational grants totaling, drum roll, please, $3,849,374 to 17 organizations serving our friends and neighbors. Yes. These transformational grants, these transformation grants are intended to, very simply, be life-changing. They will support evidence-based programs focused on solutions to build capacity, improve efficiency, and ensure programs make measurable impact. But the overall goal is eliminating food insecurity, promoting housing stability, and providing effective mental health and substance use disorder treatment and prevention programs. I'd like to especially thank Megan Sheebic, who chaired the grant committee, and the volunteers who served on that committee. Also, a shout-out to our very own Mary Keating. She was a big part of it. The names of the organizations appear on the list with the purple heading at your desk. Foundation and county staff are happy to arrange visits. You can all learn more about these projects, and I definitely encourage you to do that. Joining us in today's celebration also, we have a representative of the 17 grantee organizations. We have Sarah O'Donnell, the Executive Director of Trittown YMCA of Villa Park. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to, to present the check. Chairman, and Dave, would you like to share a few thoughts?
So I wanted to invite Sarah and Dave to say a few words. And Sarah, I think you're up first. So Sarah of our Trittown YMCA, please.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the introduction and for inviting me to share a few words with you today. On behalf of the nonprofits across DuPage County, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and DuPage County Board members, DuPage Foundation Board members, and the selection committee for your commitment to supporting the many incredible projects that have been presented and approved as part of the DuPage Community Transformation Partnership opportunity. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Trittown YMCA, just as every DuPage business, government entity, nonprofit, and place of worship, had to demonstrate incredible adaptability with clear, incredible strategies during a very uncertain time. Among many of the things that the pandemic taught us, perhaps the greatest learning was that working in partnership and building on each other's strengths were the keys to keeping our communities within DuPage healthy and vibrant. Whether as a volunteer, a worker, or a client receiving services, every single DuPage neighbor felt the impact of the pandemic and the overwhelming generosity and kindness the safety net of support continues to provide across the county. As one county, one team, today, we are embarking together on a journey to provide an even greater depth of service to support the significant needs within our region as a fallout of the pandemic. I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to share with you how your dedication will provide positive and sustainable long-term impacts around DuPage, especially as it relates to equitable mental health service access. This support could not have come at a more crucial time as our agencies are experiencing an exponential increase of calls for help from DuPage neighbors. Just last week, I sat and listened to a mother pleading for help in finding services for her child, as the wait is, on average, four months. The DuPage Community Transformation Grants allows for the nonprofit selected to help answer these calls and requests. On a more micro level, I would like to share with you how the grant is providing Trittown YMCA the opportunity to launch our evidence-based Collaboratory for Youth Mental Health project. This project is a diverse, multi-pronged approach that includes over a half dozen project partners that will walk alongside the community members and help to address and meet the pressing mental health needs among youths and families in DuPage. Our project aims to equip parents with tools for addressing their youth's acute and chronic social emotional needs through a parent education series with partners such as NAMI DuPage and Local School District 45. It will also improve access to in-person confidence-building and recreation experiences for youths facing, including youths facing homelessness to DuPage pads. Perhaps the most significant component of our project that this grant will provide is the opening of nearly 5,000 appointment slots during out-of-school time for youth mental health counseling services in partnership with Northeast DuPage Family and Youth Services. The grant funding will also provide crime-reducing support for the community through the hiring of the first social worker for our local police department. And, the probably most challenging part, will shift the mindsets of middle school students from crisis response coping to positive education and hands-on career pathway planning. Finally, we seek to develop a database that links between the partners to collect not only the data, but stories of impact along our journey. The DuPage-based company selected for this component of the project is focused on nonprofit data collection and is part of Innovation DuPage. Each component of Collaboratory for Youth Mental Health project connects to the next and builds collaborative, transformational change for the better and post-pandemic times. Our project is one of 17 amazing projects that the DuPage Community Transformation Partnership has selected and entrusted organizations and their partners across the county to set forth a making transformational change for DuPage. On behalf of all of us and the DuPage neighbors, we help. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you very much. It's great to understand or to illuminate exactly how this is going to happen. In introducing Dave McGowan, I guess I just wanted to say I'm just so pleased that we can realize this vision, this vision of this partnership here today. And really, I think everybody here is to be commended. Our approach to helping those in need, community services, is to turn to DuPage Foundation, to turn to experts, and to turn to folks that review grant applications and really have something, a level of expertise that while our community services does a marvelous job, no question about it, they're the best. I think partnering with DuPage Foundation has really taken DuPage County government to another level. And so I just want to thank Dave, and I want to thank the DuPage Foundation Board for embracing this proposal. And with that, I give it over to you, Dave.
Thank you, Dan. I am going to check my notes, but I'm pretty sure all the acknowledgements have been offered already in, as they should be. But one person I'd like to thank is who's doubling as our photographer on behalf of the foundation is Barb Sopaniak, our VP for Programs. And I just want to, perhaps you're aware of this, but this team of Barb and Mary is unstoppable. And you have empowered two key people in DuPage to enact your vision here, and they really deserve a round of applause, really.
I will just say, after hearing Sarah speak, I don't know if you've interacted with Sarah, but she is one of the hardest-working people in DuPage County. And this morning, she represents a couple hundred not-for-profit CEOs and executive directors that we have no idea how hard they work on the front lines to really, I mean, they have vision and big plans for their organizations. And then, as Sarah said, they get into crisis management, and they have the biggest hearts and energy. I don't know what time Sarah goes to sleep, but I'm pretty sure it's very, very late. But again, thank you for having this vision. We really look forward to keeping you informed of the impact that these grants make. And there are accountabilities to be able to come back and say, what I think I'm going to say this morning is this matters, and you are making a huge difference. And thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along. Next, I'd like to invite our State's Attorney, Bob Berlin, to the podium. We have a presentation on the SAFE-T Act. And, you know, I had a chance over the weekend, it was an otherwise pleasant weekend, I had a chance to review last Tuesday's JPS committee meeting, and I will advise the board that I'll be running this session a bit differently. I want to offer our State's Attorney an opportunity to provide as much information as possible, as long as decorum is maintained. I welcome respectful questions from all members, as our, as our goal here is to provide you and the public reliable information and the benefit of our State's Attorney's experience. So all questions from all members will be entertained, and we are here to benefit from our State's Attorney's experience. If I may add, we are so fortunate, we really are. We are so fortunate that our chief law enforcement officer is Bob Berlin. I don't know if you know much about his, his career, but it's just remarkable. He's a public servant that has a breadth of experience and a hands-on prosecutor in three different counties, Cook County, Kane County, DuPage County. He enjoys an impeccable reputation. He is well-respected statewide, regionally, and I would say nationally. So, State's Attorney Berlin, please, take it away.
I could invite myself up for this, too.
Oh, I was going to call on you next, so you're first. We're going to kick it off with our Chief Judge, Ken Popejoy, and I'm delighted that you're here as well, Judge, because it's good to hear from people that are really on the ground, that really know what they're talking about. So Judge Popejoy, please share with us some of your thoughts about this SAFE-T Act, please.
Well, I just wanted to start off this presentation. I wanted to thank you all very, very much for giving Bob Berlin and I the opportunity to come in here and discuss this matter with you. Bob is by far the most relevant discussion that's going on. I'll have some comments afterwards. But I just want to always let you know with this county board, you are our county board, and we are your judges and your State's Attorney. And we are here to work in conjunction with you, like I talked with all of you when I first became Chief Judge. And we value, we're privileged, and we're honored to come in front of you and be able to discuss with you our perspective and this county's perspective of what's going on with this act. So I'm going to have Bob Berlin give his presentation at this point. I'll have a few comments afterwards, and then both of us will be available for whatever questions you might have. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Chairman Cronin, members of the board. Thanks for having me here this morning. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'm going to go through, and I want to actually show everyone here what's actually in the law. There's no question, there's a lot of misinformation that we've heard in the public. And I'm going to go through this law so you can see for yourself what the provisions are and how it is going to impact DuPage County. Okay, so we're going to start out with what the current law is. And currently, we have a cash bond system. And judges hear the facts of a case, they hear a defendant's background, they hear arguments from the state and the defense attorney, and they make a decision whether to release the defendant on their own recognizance, known as a recognizance, or in some counties, an I-bond, individual recognizance, or to set a cash bond. The current language of the statute allows judges to release someone on a recognizance bond if the defendant will not pose a danger to any person or the community. Now, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, that language in the same statute has changed. There's no longer a mention of community, and there's now a presumption, as of January 1st, that defendants will be entitled to release on their own recognizance. In fact, the Pretrial Fairness Act specifically states that detention only shall be imposed when it is determined that the defendant poses a specific, real, and present threat to a person, or has a high likelihood of willful flight. And I want to stress that first part, because this law says a specific, real, and present threat to a person, and as I will show you, based on the changes in the Pretrial Fairness Act, a specific, real, and present threat to a person is not the community. So people can be detained under one of two standards. Either they have this specific, real, and present threat to a person, or they have a high likelihood of willful flight. Going back to our current bail law, again, it says here that in determining the amount of monetary bail or the conditions of release, judges should consider the safety of any other person or the community. And that's significant, because that is how judges set some of the high bonds that we see. We see in this county, million, $2 million, $3 million bonds on serious violent crimes, and they're being set because a person is a threat to the community. Now, this is the Pretrial Fairness Act, Section 110-4. And what it says is, all persons charged with a defense are eligible for pretrial release before conviction, and pretrial release may only be denied when a person is charged with an offense listed in Section 110-6.1, or the defendant has a high likelihood of willful flight. I'm going to talk about the definition of willful flight, and I'm going to go through all of the crimes listed in 110-6.1, because the law says after January 1st, those are the only two ways somebody can be detained pretrial. Definition of willful flight, and this is new to the Pretrial Fairness Act, it means planning or attempting to intentionally evade prosecution by concealing oneself. And goes on to state that simple past non-appearance in court alone is not evidence of future intent to evade prosecution. Right now, under the current law, we will always bring out the fact in a bond hearing that someone has missed court. And if they've missed court numerous times, that is something that judges use in determining, is this person likely to appear in court? Under the new law, judges cannot consider simple past non-appearance in court, and willful flight means planning or attempting to evade, intentionally evade prosecution by concealing oneself. In order to meet that standard, we're going to have to show that the defendant has a ticket to get out of town, or makes a statement to the police, if I get out, I am going to flee the jurisdiction. This is an extremely difficult standard to prove. And I would also point out that, right now, if you look at all the defendants who are in custody pretrial, the overwhelming majority are there because they're a threat to the community, not because they're a flight risk. There are some cases, especially the drug traffickers, where we can show someone's a flight risk. This is a much more difficult standard to prove under the Pretrial Fairness Act. So, again, looking at the Pretrial Fairness Act, who's eligible for detention, it's important to note that a judge can only detain someone if the state files a petition. That is a prerequisite. In this county, right now, in order to hold someone with no bond, the state has to file a petition, and we do that regularly on violent crimes. We file petitions to hold people with no bond. We will continue to file petitions under this act for, for those that we believe are eligible. But without a petition, a judge has no ability to set a bond or to detain someone, unlike what they do right now. Okay, so let's go through the crimes under 110-6.1 that are subject to detention. And there's seven different sections, A1 through A7, and I want to go through each one of them individually. The first one is under A1, our forcible felonies, but they are forcible felonies for which a sentence of imprisonment is required by law upon conviction. Only certain forcible felonies are a mandatory prison sentence. And I'm going to go through the ones that are mandatory prison sentence and the ones that are not. So this section applies only to the mandatory prison sentence forcible felonies. And here's the only place in the Pretrial Fairness Act you see the community standard. So a person has to be charged with one of these forcible felonies for which you cannot receive probation, and the state has to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the person poses a specific, real, and present threat to any person or the community. These are your non-probationable forcible felonies that are covered under the Pretrial Fairness Act. Murder, predatory criminal sexual assault, aggravated criminal sexual assault, criminal sexual assault, residential burglary is non-probationable, aggravated arson, aggravated kidnapping, and any other felony which involves the use or threat of physical force or physical violence against an individual, which would include armed robberies, home invasions, aggravated vehicular hijackings. Those are detainable offenses under the Pretrial Fairness Act. These offenses, which are listed here, are forcible felonies, but they are all probationable. Therefore, they do not fall under this definition. And the only way to detain people charged with these crimes are if they are a willful flight risk. They're dangerous to the community, their dangerous to, dangerousness or risk to another person is irrelevant. And these include aggravated batteries, which can occur with a knife, which can occur by way of a beating, robberies and aggravated robberies, burglaries, arson, threatening a public official, intimidation, hate crimes, fall into this category, only detainable if someone is a willful flight risk. I would point out, in one of the questions last week, Professor Van Brunt was asked about robberies and armed robberies, and stated that, well, when you have a robbery, it's almost always an armed robbery, it's almost always with a gun. Well, in 2021, last year, we charged 31 armed robberies, we charged 34 robberies or aggravated robberies, not committed with a gun. So over half of the robberies charged in this county are not committed with a gun, and they're not detainable unless someone is a willful flight risk. Aggravated robberies are when you indicate by your action or your conduct, or your words, that you are armed with a gun. So somebody goes into the 7-Eleven with their hand in their pocket as if they have a gun, or we see times where offenders use BB guns or airsoft pistols that look like a gun, but they're not a real gun. Those are aggravated robberies, they're probationable offenses. Therefore, someone's risk to the, to the public, risk to another person is irrelevant. The only way to detain under the Pretrial Fairness Act is if they are a willful flight risk. Also, on this list is disorderly conduct threats against a school. And I know Professor Van Brunt was asked about that and stated, we don't lock people up for disorderly conduct now. Disorderly conduct is an incredibly minor offense. Well, I would submit that threats to a school are serious offenses, and we take them very seriously in this county. And we do detain people charged with threatening schools. In fact, it happens all the time in juvenile court. Anyone who threatens a teacher, threatens violence at a school, is brought to court. And under the Pretrial Fairness Act, disorderly conduct threat to a school, which is a Class 4 felony, is not a detainable offense, even if the person is a willful flight risk, because, as I'll show you in a second, it is a Class 4 felony. Professor Van Brunt was asked about aggravated assaults, and said, well, almost all the time aggravated assault is committed with a gun. Well, even if it is committed with a gun, it's still a Class 4 felony, not a detainable offense under the Pretrial Fairness Act. Whether Whether they're a flight risk or not, Class IV felonies, those Class IV felonies are not detainable. We charge aggravated assaults also based on the age of a victim. If a victim is 60 years of age or older, and they're assaulted, or a teacher is assaulted, a school employee upon school grounds, those are Class IV aggravated assaults. A peace officer, fireman, emergency management worker are all protected under the aggravated assault statute. They do not require the use of a gun, they're Class IV felonies that will not be detainable offenses under the Pretrial Fairness Act. So, again, for the above probationable forcible felonies, a defendant's danger to the community or risk to reoffend is not relevant, a judge cannot consider that in making a detention determination. Defendants charged with those offenses can only be detained if they are a willful flight risk, and you saw the definition of what willful flight risk is. Okay, now we'll move on to the A2 offenses, which are stalking and aggravated stalking. Here, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, defendants can be detained if they pose a real and present threat to the physical safety of a victim of the alleged offense. This is a different standard, obviously, than was in A1, where it was a specific, real, and present threat to any person or the community. And secondly, denial of release is necessary to prevent fulfillment of the threat upon which the charge is based. And this dangerous standard is specific to the victim, under A2. Under A3, these offenses are domestic violence cases, where there's a family member and there's a pending order of protection, or a defendant was previously convicted of a violation of order of protection, or has a prior violent crime conviction against a family or household member. Defendants charged with these domestic violence cases can be detained under the Pretrial Fairness Act if they pose a real and present threat to the physical safety of any person or persons. Moving on to A4, these are your domestic batteries and aggravated domestic batteries. And here again, defendants can be detained if we prove by clear and convincing evidence that the defendant is a real and present threat to the physical safety of any person or persons. A5 are all of your sex offenses, with the exception of public indecency, fornication, bigamy, and marrying a bigamist. In reality, I've never seen fornication or bigamy, marrying a bigamist charged in my 35 years, but we do charge public indecency, unfortunately, quite often. But for sex offenses, again, defendants can be detained under the Pretrial Fairness Act if they pose a real and present threat to the physical safety of any person or persons. Now moving on to A6, these are certain gun offenses, as well as trafficking offenses. And defendants charged with some of these gun offenses, the ones listed here, can be detained if they pose a real and present threat to the physical safety of any specifically identifiable person or persons. And you will notice that that standard is different than the standards in A2 through A5, as well as different than A1. This is now a different standard. So, if you take the armed habitual criminal, and unfortunately, we've seen quite a few of those recently, these are defendants with serious criminal backgrounds who are in possession of a gun illegally. In order to detain those defendants, we're going to have to show that they are a present, a real and present threat to the physical safety of a specifically identifiable person or persons, and we'll have to name that individual. And without a threat, without a defendant telling the police, I'm possessing this gun because I want to hurt someone, this is going to be extremely difficult, if not impossible, Okay, now we move on to A7, and this is a catch-all paragraph in the detention statute. This is any felony charged in Sections A1 through A5, all the felonies that I just went through, or a felony offense other than a Class IV. For those offenses that are described in A1 through A5, a person can be detained if they are a willful risk of flight, using that definition I said earlier, but not Class IV offenses, they have to be Class III or above. So, we're going to go through the Class IV offenses that are not listed in A1 through A5, and thus, not subject to detention unless the defendant has a high risk of willful flight. Actually, these are not the Class IV, but these are offenses that are not listed in A1 through A5, aggravated DUI being one of them, and that includes aggravated DUI death. So the drunk driver who kills someone, their risk to the community is not relevant, it's a Class II felony, they can only be detained if they are a willful risk of flight. And that is regardless of how bad their drunk driving history may be. All drug offenses, except for the Class IVs, and the Class IVs are not detainable under any circumstance, but all drug trafficking, all drug deliveries, all delivery of fentanyl, possession with intent to deliver fentanyl, the truck driver with a truck full of fentanyl cannot be detained unless they are a willful risk of flight. And this includes drug-induced homicide, people who deliver drugs, somebody uses those drugs and dies. We've charged over 20 of those in the past few years. Only detainable if they are a willful flight risk. Their threat to the community cannot be considered by the judge. Now, I talked about the term "real and present threat to the physical safety of any person or persons." In the current bail law, which expires January 1st, there's a definition of what real and present threat to the physical safety of any person or persons means, and it includes a threat to the community. Very significant, because this is what our judges are using now to set high bonds. Includes a threat to the community. Under the Pretrial Fairness Act, that same section is now blank, that community standard has been removed. It is a threat to a, a real and present threat to a person or persons, or specifically identifiable person or persons. That is the standard under the Pretrial Fairness Act, not a threat to the community. Now, these are Class IV felonies that, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, will not be detainable under any circumstance. Threat to the community, or whether they're a willful flight risk, and they include aggravated fleeing and eluding. Many of you may have seen a recent article where Chief Jason Harries of the Naperville Police Department was quoted as saying that the number of people fleeing traffic stops has gone up exponentially in the past several years. Those are not detainable offenses. Disorderly conduct threat to a school, not a detainable offense. Mob action, communicating with jurors and witnesses, concealing or aiding a fugitive, or obstructing justice, unless it's in furtherance of gang activity, street gang activity. These will not be detainable offenses because they are Class IV felonies, and it includes aggravated assault, which is a Class IV felony. Again, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, not a detainable offense. Okay, so, the conduct of the hearings, state's going to file a petition before the first court date for those in custody, and we have to tender before the hearing, any police reports that we're going to use that we have in our possession. And this is why we have asked for more screeners for our felony screening unit. Our screeners, when they approve a case in the middle of the night, will prepare the petition for court the next morning, so that our attorneys are prepared when they go to court and answer-ready for these detention hearings. We will have a criminal history, just as we do now, and we will be prepared for those hearings, which must be held immediately. In this county, because we have court every day, immediately means the next court date, which is the next date. In some of the smaller counties downstate, where they have court once a week, that means at the very next court date. It's going to be different down there. Okay, the petition, and this is what the new law says, contents of the petition, we file the petition, and it must include the identity of the specific person or persons the state believes the defendant poses a danger to. Again, this provision conflicts with earlier provisions in the statute, which talks about a real, a specific and present threat to a person or persons. In this section of the statute, and this applies to all petitions, it says, we must identify the specific person or persons, and that is going to be extremely difficult in certain cases. In domestic violence cases, it's clear who the victim is. In stalking cases, we know who the victim is, but in a gun possession charge or a drug case, it's going to be very difficult to include that. Okay, moving on, this is the burden of proof at a detention hearing. And again, remember, all defendants are presumed eligible for pretrial release under the Pretrial Fairness Act. The state has to prove three things by clear and convincing evidence. Number one, proof is evident or the presumption great that the defendant has committed one of the offenses that I've gone through in A1 through A6 of 110-6.1. We do that now at bond hearings. We make a proffer of what the evidence is, where we can show what our evidence is. Secondly, the defendant poses a real and present threat to the safety of a specific identifiable person or persons. Again, this language directly conflicts with other sections of the Pretrial Fairness Act, and this is something that we have pointed out to the General Assembly, but the judges are bound to follow it, and I'm going to show you in a second how this is being interpreted by the Illinois Supreme Court. Third, we also have to show that no condition or combination of conditions can mitigate the real and present threat to the safety of any person or persons, or the defendant's willful flight. Again, this is not a community standard, it's a threat to a specific person or persons. This is a draft of a flowchart. It has not been finalized yet, but this is the Illinois Supreme Court Implementation Task Force, and in that flowchart, in the bottom there, in the middle, you can see that the Supreme Court believes that in the petition, we're going to have to allege, and a judge is going to have to find, the threat to a specific identifiable person or persons, not a community standard. Once this is finalized, it will be put up on their website, along with their other Now, in another section of the PFA, it suggests that the court is going to have to make a finding both that the person is a threat to the community and that the defendant will appear in court. A written finding as to why less restrictive conditions would not assure safety to the community and assure the defendant's appearance in court, directly in conflict with other sections of the law. So, if we go back to the A1 offenses, I talked about the forcible felonies where probation is not an option, so murder, carjacking, armed robbery, judges can detain if someone is a threat to a person, person, or the community in those offenses. At the very next court date, and every other court date thereafter, each subsequent appearance of the defendant before the court, the judge now must find that continued detention or the current set of conditions imposed are necessary to avoid the specific, real, and present threat to any person, or willful flight from prosecution to continued detention. So even if someone is detained because they're a threat to the community under a forcible, non-probationable felony, at every subsequent court date, the judge has to find a threat to a specific, I'm sorry, to a person, a specific, real, and present threat to a person, a much In determining conditions of release, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, the court can use a validated risk assessment. The validated risk assessment tool in Illinois is still not ready, we're not sure when it will be ready for all counties to use, but courts have the ability, when releasing someone, to put them on electronic monitoring. And/or home confinement, and home, electronic monitoring is not required for home detention to be considered custodial for purposes of credit. For purposes of credit, anyone on home detention or electronic monitoring gets day-for-day credit off of their jail sentence, for every day that they're on EM or home detention. In addition, if somebody is on home detention or electronic monitoring, at a minimum, two days a week, they are allowed to movement, spread out over two days, to participate in basic activities such as going to the grocery store, purchasing food, or other basic necessities. They can leave their house, and they are still getting day-for-day credit under this Okay, let's talk about violations under the Pretrial Fairness Act. So, there are two different categories. Somebody on pretrial release violates if they commit a Class A misdemeanor or a felony, or anything other than that, a Class B or C misdemeanor, or they violate another condition. So let's talk about violations first, other than a felony or a Class A misdemeanor. These include failures to appear. Somebody doesn't show up in court, it's a violation of their pretrial release. What it says back here is, the court shall follow the procedures set forth in Section 110-3. And if you go to 110-3, this is the summons section. So a court will not have the ability to issue a warrant in those circumstances. If somebody doesn't show up in court, or they have violated their pretrial release by committing a Class B or C misdemeanor, the judge first has to issue a summons to appear. Then, if the offender has served with the summons and does not appear, a judge can issue a warrant. Right now, under current law, when someone doesn't show up in court, if it's an unexcused absence, judges issue warrants. When somebody violates the conditions of their bond, we file a petition, a judge can issue a warrant. They will not have that ability. It's important to note that warrants go into the LEEDs system, which is the law enforcement agency data system. So when a police officer stops a defendant, let's say, in a traffic stop and runs their name, that warrant is going to show up under their LEEDs history. Summons are not put into LEEDs. And the reality is that suburban police departments, we have a difficult time right now working with Chicago police, getting assistance in search warrants, in executing arrest warrants. With a summons, it's not going to happen. We're not going to get that cooperation, and the reality is that there's an officer safety issue when a police officer from Elmer's or Hinsdale has to go into Chicago to serve a summons on a violent offender. But there is an extra step in the Pretrial Fairness Act before a judge can issue a warrant for failing to appear in court or violating conditions of release. For violations that are a felony or a Class A, I'm sorry, other than a Class A or felony, for those violations, if a defendant is held in violation, a judge can sanction them. They can give them a verbal or written admonishment, or sentence them to 30 days, or fine them, or modify their pretrial conditions. or modify their pretrial conditions. That's the extent of the sanctions. Right now, somebody doesn't show up in court or violates their bond, a judge can revoke their bond in many circumstances. That will not be the case under the Pretrial Fairness Act. Somebody on electronic monitoring or home detention, if they violate, if they take their monitor off, if they cut it off, they cannot be charged with escape unless they are in violation for 48 hours. This was added into the Pretrial Fairness Act. Forty-eight hours before, we can charge them with escape. That is not the status of the law right now. And we have seen multiple cases where defendants cut their electronic monitors off. It happens. Okay, so, current law says, somebody violates the conditions of their bond, let's say they don't show up in court and they disappear. The violation is one class lower felony. So if somebody on, let's say, bond for residential burglary is a Class 1 felony, if they don't show up in court, they don't come in 30 days later, we can indict them for violation of bail bond, and it would be a Class 2 felony, one felony below. Under the new law, Pretrial Fairness Act, any violation of pretrial release is a Class A misdemeanor, regardless of what the offense is. So you can be on release for an armed robbery or robbery. If you don't show up in court, it is a Class A misdemeanor for all offenses. Many of us, in the many states, attorneys in this state, as well as other people involved in the implementation of this law, have been requesting for, over a year and a half, Illinois implement New Jersey's model. New Jersey eliminated cash bail in 2017. So they've had no cash bail in almost all cases, except for very limited circumstances. And by all accounts, from judges, defense attorneys, and prosecutors, their system has worked incredibly well. The reason it has is this language. New Jersey allows judges discretion to detain defendants in every single criminal case. There is no detention net. There are no detainable versus non-detainables. Every criminal offense is a detainable offense in New Jersey. And judges can detain if someone's a risk to the community, a risk to a person, if they're likely to intimidate witnesses or jurors, if they're likely to obstruct justice, or if they're likely to flee. A couple of weeks ago, a bill was filed in Springfield. It was Senator Scott Bennett's bill. He's a state senator in Champaign County. Senate Bill 4228 is modeled after New Jersey's law. And it includes the same language that is in New Jersey, which will allow Illinois judges to detain someone if they're a risk to the community, if they're a risk to any other person, if they're likely to obstruct justice, intimidate witnesses, or flee. We've heard a lot about the citation for Class B and C misdemeanors under the Pretrial Fairness Act. And this is what the law says in the Pretrial Fairness Act. Been a lot of discussion about this, that law enforcement shall, shall means they have to, issue a citation, a lieu custodial arrest for Class B and C misdemeanors where the offender is not an obvious threat to the community. And there is no definition of what obvious threat to the community means, okay? Or if the offender will not, doesn't have an obvious medical or mental health issue that pose a risk to their own safety. If you look at Senate Bill 4228, that language is changed in the Senate bill, and it will allow police to arrest on Class B and C misdemeanors if they're a threat to the community, or if the police believe that they need to make an arrest in order to discontinue the criminal behaviors. All these instances of trespass that the public has been talking about, what's going to happen, Senate Bill 4228 addresses that. Senate Bill 4228 makes clear the position that we are taking here in DuPage County and other counties are taking, and that is that the Pretrial Fairness Act is prospective only and will apply to all crimes committed on or after January 1st. I can tell you in my discussions with the state's attorneys in other counties, some counties are going to do detention hearings all through the month of November, and they're going to be prospective. They'll be effective January 1st. The legality of those types of hearings is something that will be determined in court. We are taking the position, and I know Judge Popejoy is going to talk about this, that it's prospective only. There's a body of research to suggest that the General Assembly does not have the ability to come in and undo bond orders that have been set by judges. So it's our position, and we know we are going to battle this out in court, that defendants will have to file motions under the Pretrial Fairness Act, but we're simply not going to open the jail doors in this county. But I can tell you that other counties have a different approach. Also, in Senate Bill 4228, is a language that addresses the standard, the dangerous standard that judges can consider. And at each subsequent appearance before the court, judges can continue to detain people as long as they're a danger to the community or another person, or again, likely to obstruct or intimidate witnesses or flee. That is the language in 4228, different than what's in the Pretrial Fairness Act. The last couple of slides are an op-ed that appeared in the Chicago Tribune, February 14th of 2020, before the Pretrial Fairness Act and the Safety Act was passed by our General Assembly. And this was written by the former Attorney General of the state of New Jersey, as well as a prosecutor who worked as both a federal and state prosecutor for 14 years. And their message to Illinois was very clear, that the New Jersey model works, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. New York tried a different approach from New Jersey, and so far, it has been a disaster. In New York's law, which is very similar to the Pretrial Fairness Act, there are entire categories of offenses where judges cannot consider someone's risk to the community. They can only detain if they're a willful risk of flight. And in New York, their index crimes have gone up 36.6% the past two years. There's a study that just came out by the Manhattan Institute, which directly correlates the increase in violent crime to New York's bail law. The opposite has happened in New Jersey, where New Jersey has actually enjoyed drops in violent crime, a 29% decrease in pretrial incarceration, and virtually no change in recidivism or court appearance rates. And New Jersey taxpayers are saving hundreds of millions of dollars by not having low-risk, nonviolent offenders needlessly incarcerated pretrial. The New Jersey model, again, requires that risk of flight and potential danger to the community be measured. Prosecutors are empowered to seek, and judges are empowered to grant pretrial detention based on the risk posed by each individual defendant. That is what the state's attorneys in Illinois, both Republican and Democrat, 100 of us, have been asking for. And so far, nothing has happened. We raised the alarm in January of 2021 when this law was passed. And we were told that there would be trailer bills, there were two already, but they would get to the cash bail portion at some point, and that has not happened yet. And I will say this, because it came up last week, Professor Van Brunt was asked about many state's attorneys, actually 100 of us, being opposed to the Pretrial Fairness Act. And she said, "Many state's attorneys are in favor of the Safety Act." That's simply not true. There are only two who are in favor of the Safety Act, and I can tell you, I am not one of them. She said, "I'm not opposed to eliminating cash bail." Well, that's not entirely true. That's not what I said. What I said, and my position is, I'm not opposed to eliminating cash bail if we have a robust preventive detention statute that allows judges to make decisions on individual cases and detain offenders who are violent, or a risk to the community, or a risk to reoffend, or a risk to the public. That is not what's in the Pretrial Fairness Act. It is what's in New Jersey's law that has worked very well for the past five years. So I want to make sure that the record is corrected on that. A couple of other things that were mentioned last week. Professor Van Brunt said the standards are not different. Right now, we have to prove by clear and convincing evidence that someone is a risk to the community, and that standard has not changed under the Pretrial Fairness Act. As I showed you in the law, it clearly has changed. It is no longer a community standard. That simply does not apply. She said prosecutors are not doing their job right now. Well, I implore Professor Van Brunt, and I implore all of you, to come watch my prosecutors conduct a bond hearing, and see how prepared we are, and see the job that my prosecutors do day in and day out, where we get high bond set and we get bonds denied in serious cases. We do our jobs very well, and will continue to do so. We work 24/7, and we are prepared at 9:00 in the morning to ask for a no bond, or ask for a $3 million bond on an offense that may have occurred just hours earlier. I know Judge Popejoy will address a couple of the other comments that Professor Van Brunt stated, but again, I want to conclude by this. The fact of the matter is that if this law, the pretrial fairness law, goes into effect January 1st, there is no question we will see an increase in violent crime. It happened in New York with a similar law. There's no reason to believe it will not happen here. DuPage County residents will suffer the consequences, and we will not be as safe. It's that simple. There are lawsuits that have been filed by some of my colleagues, and there's a group of us that continue to work with the General Assembly to rewrite this law. But the fact is, we will continue, 100 of 102 state's attorneys are going to continue to do everything we can to prevent the law as currently written from going into effect, because we all believe the same thing, and that is that violence will increase with the way the law is currently written. I'll turn it over to Judge Popejoy.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. And why am I here? I told you two years ago, we all run elections as red and blue, but when judges get elected, we put on the color black. We don't have a political position. We don't have a political opinion. We don't have a political agenda. We wear the color black for a particular reason. We interpret the law, and we apply the rule of law, and that's it. My opinion, or my judge's opinion, doesn't matter. In this act, there are a lot of inconsistencies and contradictions. As State's Attorney Bullin said, we may get some trailer bills that will help define this to some extent. There's clearly going to be appellate review across the state about how different jurisdictions, the 24 Circuits that we have in this state, are going to be interpreting this, and how they're going to function with it, and what's going to happen. And if there are varying appellate opinions, then it will be the Supreme Court to clear out the consistency of the appellate opinions, to get some clarity. So are we going to have clarity at any time along the way? No, we're not. There's going to be a lot of testing that is done. Way back in January when this passed, I set up a committee of judges in our circuit to study every aspect of this bill as it was going through, and to help us make the transition that was going to be a difficult and thoughtful transition to be made. Chief of the Felony Division, Brian Teelander, Chief of the Misdemeanor Division, Karen Wilson, and two associate judges, Josh Deeden and Dimitri Panousias, who have been involved in a lot of the bond court activities, the order protection activities, the exigent-type calls that we have in the 18th Judicial Circuit. That's the committee. And they have been working and meeting every two weeks since January to help us interpret and decide what we are going to do. And it's a job. And it's a job that the rest of the state is looking at us for. A lot of the forms, a lot of the flow charts, a lot of things that are being put together, your 18th Judicial Circuit has put them together, because we want to be ready to hit the ground running January 1st to the best of our abilities. And we will be. But we won't have all the answers to the questions either. So with all of that, why am I here? The first thing I do want to state for sure is that that committee, and I, have extensively, extensively reviewed State's Attorney Bullin's presentation today. We've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb. We've discussed it. We've kibitzed about it, as you might say. It is a 100% accurate interpretation of this act. Whatever the act is, it is a 100% accurate interpretation of this act. And that's the main reason I came today, so that you didn't think there was a huge advocacy position, or there was a red and blue position, or there was any position that was involved in this. It's the position of what does this law state? And what does it leave for our state's attorney, public defender, probation department, and judges to do? And Bob Bullin has accurately identified what it states, and what the issues are, and what the limitations might be, the availability to do things might be, and that's what me and my committee are detailing extensively for our judiciary. Now, the other reason I came, and I really wasn't intending to necessarily be here, because Bob's an amazing state's attorney, let's just start off with that. He does a great job. I think this county has been run well, is safe and secure, because how comprehensive and how detailed our state's attorney is and how he functions in his job. And we've also got the exact same thing with Jeff York, your public defender. There's two advocates going against each other, but we have an amazing public defender, and how good he does his job. And all of us have come in and presented to you many times. We've developed a relationship with each of you many times. And because of that, there should be some credibility that comes from your judges, your state's attorney, and your public defender, that maybe you don't get from outside sources. And that's why I wanted to come in, because I listened to Professor Van Brunt. What an intelligent woman. What an educated woman. There was some issue about whether she's been in a courtroom or not been in a courtroom, and her resume has three pages of courtroom activities. Primarily federal court activities, mind you, but courtroom activities. So she's not your typical law professor, sitting solely in the ivory tower, not knowing what the inside of the courtroom is like. I get that, and I respect that. And my God, her academic credentials blew mine out of the water. I felt like I should just go home and do law school again or something. But the point was, I've never seen her in a DuPage County courtroom, or a Kane County courtroom, or a Lake County courtroom, or a Kendall and DeKalb County courtroom, or a McHenry County courtroom. She can talk all she wants about Cook County. As a matter of fact, in one of her representative cases, Robinson versus Martin, Circuit Court of Cook County, litigation counsel in class action challenging wealth-based discrimination in Cook County court system's pretrial release procedures. It was dismissed on procedural grounds, but what did it lead to? It led to Chief Judge Evans preparing an administrative order that required his judges to consider the restees' ability to pay on bond proceedings. Really? Really? In Cook County, it took an administrative order from a chief judge to tell his judges to follow the law? Okay, I get Professor Van Brunt going nuts on that, being lead counsel. How justified? How worthwhile? How beneficial? Darn right. But we're not in Cook County. And I don't sign administrative orders telling my judges to follow the law because they follow the law and they follow it to the best of their abilities. So when Professor Van Brunt said, quote, "Judges lock up individuals not based on safety concerns or community concerns, straight-out economic discrimination," end of quote, I was offended. I was offended by that. How dare she tell me what I, and I've been in bond court many times in my 25 careers, 25-year career, or any of our judges do or don't do? How dare she? That's why I wanted to come in today. So your various things that make, let me see, what was the other thing? Oh, yeah. The other thing that she said that angered me. Jail's open January 1, 2023. That is false. File your petition now. Proceed that way. And as we heard, some of the circuits are doing that. We're not doing that. Ours, we are going to interpret this statute as being prospective only. How can a statute come into effect and deal with previously set court activities and determinations under the law? She says there'll be an orderly process. There won't be an orderly process if we don't do it prospectively. Everybody in jail gets a detention hearing within 24 hours of January 1, 2023. Everyone. That's an orderly process? That's a nightmare. We can't do it. We can't function that way. I don't know what the exact jail population is, but it's not four or five people. And these detention hearings are going to be involved. You're going to have six, seven, eight detention hearings, maybe a day, from 8:00 to 4:30, and that's going to be every day, and that's going to be Saturdays, and that's going to be Sundays. It isn't going to be an orderly process if we follow the professor's interpretation. And then she went on in response to one of the questions. She says, "Now prosecutors do not produce any evidence in considering whether people should be locked up. It is solely based on the money they have." That's, you just heard from Bob Berlin. That is absolutely false. Not only is there an extensive proffer by the state's attorney of various circumstances that are involved, one way or the other, but we've got to remember there's also a public defender in this room, and they are making an extended proffer of what aspects there are of mitigation, what reasons there is to not post a bond or the dollar amount of the bond. And we, as judges, do that now. We don't come out and just pull some ruling out of our robe? She said the next thing. Judges say, quote, "I'm going to say you're a threat," end of quote. And she says, "They say that when they have no evidence and it's a very generic determination." Well, then get out here and watch us do bond court because it isn't a very generic determination. It's a reasoned determination with what we have at the time. Do we have everything? No, of course not. Someone just got arrested last night near an 8:00 AM bond court. But it's amazing what the state's attorney had to tell us about it, and it's amazing what the public defender has in mitigation to tell us about it. Those two officers are so on top of these bond hearings and these arrests that take place. It's unbelievable. We don't come out and just pull something out of our robe. We listen. We evaluate. We have the defendant comment if he would once too. Don't always do it for their constitutional rights. Get it. But that's how the determinations are made. She went on to say, "Now bonds are not based on risk assessment." Dear God, it's one of our biggest determinations. It seriously is one of our biggest determinations. What are we going to do with this person back on the street? It's a big question, and it's a big factor of what we do. Now, even when you go beyond all of that and, okay, we do set a cash bond and someone has a certain dollar amount that's involved one way or the other. Well, what happens in this county? Not in the professor's federal court or in Cook County. What happens in this county? And I'm going to read you directly an email I got from Bob McGillen. If a defendant is not released from jail and indicates he will not be able to post bond, our pretrial investigators interview the defendant. The investigator will gather background information, including family, residential, education, employment, substantive abuse, and mental health history. The investigator will also conduct a criminal history check and complete a pretrial risk assessment. A report will be completed and submitted to the court on the next court date, which is usually five days from the initial bond-setting court date. And at that date, the judge may use that report to determine any change to the previous-ordered bond amount. So let's just say we've got a rogue bond court judge or we've got a judge that didn't get much sleep the night before, or we've got a judge that had some issue one way or the other and has an attitude about something. We've got the safety net right here, right here with our probation department. And you know how good our probation department is, and those things can get changed very, very quickly. So in my closing, I appreciate the professor's intelligence, background, and opinion. Hey, we all have opinions. We respect the opinions and we respect the presentation of it. And no, through no fault of anybody in this room, that wasn't much of a time to get into much of a dialogue there. There were a lot of gross generalities that were given, and that was kind of her role in a quick one-hour meeting. I get it. But she did not, she did not accurately reflect what us judges do. She did not accurately reflect what we consider. She did not accurately reflect what your county judges do in regard to evaluating a bond for defendants. Now, all of that aside, bond is changing January 1st. I get it. But I just had to come in and say rhetorically to her, "How dare you? How dare you affront our judges in this county in that manner without having a factual basis?" Looks like she darn well had a good one in Cook County. Administrative order to tell them, hey, follow the law and don't consider this or that, whatever. Darn right. Thank goodness she did that. Proud of her. Haven't seen her out here. Not asking for that, not looking for that, not wondering if that's needed because it isn't. The other thing that Bob referenced is if, when this act comes into play and defendants are ordered by the judge to be monitored while out on bond, and there's going to be a lot of that, let me tell you, there's going to be a lot of that. Well, again, referencing Bob McGillen, over the past three years, our supervision numbers have significantly increased from an average of 1,379 in 2019 to our current supervised population of 1,842 people. And what do we anticipate for 2023? An explosion, a skyrocket. Because if we don't have the ability to detain some of these people who, under what we were historically used to having standards, community standards, community safety, if we don't have those tools as judges anymore, we're going to monitor them. Because what are we going to do when we let someone walk out the door and we read about the next day's paper? So are we going to monitor them? Damn right we are. What's that going to do to our probation department? Talk about the number exponential. It's more like logarithmic what's going to change. And it's going to be real. And again, that's the law, and I'm not here to debate the law, and I'm not here to be an advocate for or against the law. But why have we come in seeking budgets for increased state's attorney, increased public defender, increased probation department personnel? For those very reasons, because it is going to be massive. So in closing, I just wanted to go back to what I originally stated. We are, for all of you, your judiciary. Bob Berlin is your state's attorney, as are all of his assistants. Jeff York is your public defender, as are all of his assistants. We have all worked wonderfully with you, and you have been amazing to us in how you have supported us, on how you have been there for us, of how you've listened to all of us. And we could not be more honored or more privileged to have had the consideration from this board that we have had. But don't judge us. Don't judge us like the professor did. Or come on in to bond court in the next two months and watch. Now, it's kind of not needed because all good change January 1st. But the point is, we work hard in this. We are all residents of this county of DuPage. I'm a 72-year resident of Milton Township. You know, my kids that live in Hawaii, Florida, Oregon, Arizona, and Utah say, "What the heck are you doing back there?" Well, it's my home. It's where I've been all my life. It's where I've practiced law since 1977. It's where I've lived since 1950. It's where my father practiced law since 1950, and it's where I became the sixth person for my father's firm to become a judge in this circuit and now have the amazing, I'm still blown away by it two years later, honor of being the chief judge and running this circuit. And I could not be more honored. But you know what? This is a damn good circuit we have here, and we do a damn good job, and that's a damn good state's attorney, and our public defender's a damn good public defender, and they do their jobs with us and we do our jobs for the people in this county. And I won't be insulted or had issue taken with me in regard to what my judges do or don't do because we're here for all of the people in the county and we're here for each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have some questions. Member DeSart.
Thank you. I just want to thank State's Attorney Bob Berlin and Chief Judge Popejoy. Thank you so much for that thorough presentation. And you both, for the four years I've been on this board, have been very receptive to me when I've called or had questions or whatever. You're very responsive, and I truly respect that. I just wanted to say, I'm not exactly sure why we continue to debate the Safety Act because our job is not to make the law for that. People need to communicate with Springfield and their representatives. Our job is simply to enforce the law, and I know that unfunded mandates are unfortunate. I learned that when I served on the Indian Prairie Board of Education when unfunded mandates came down from Springfield. Our job is just to figure out how to pay for these unfunded mandates. And I've listened to Professor Van Brunt. I've listened to State's Attorney Bob Berlin. I've listened to Chief Judge Popejoy, and I've learned a lot from all three entities. I also know that people practice law, right? They practice law because the law could be interpreted in so many different ways and hopefully the judges and the lawyers get it right. But interpreting the law is messy, and like it or not, in this country, people are innocent until proven guilty. And semantics, I'm having a challenge by the semantics of a person versus a community because the person is in the community and is a community member. So it's like, you know, a person is the community and if they're, is, just that interpretation I'm challenged by. I respect Professor Van Brunt. I respect Mr. Berlin and Chief Judge Popejoy and Mr. York as well. I respect you very much, and I think I've told each and every one of you how much I respect you. But again, we're not a lawmaking body, and I just wanted to say, our job on this board is to figure out how to pay for these unfunded mandates, and I think so far this board has done an excellent job. Thank you.
Member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, State's Attorney Berlin. Just a couple of questions, obviously not being a lawyer. When you say you have to go in, when someone is arrested and detained, how long do you have then to bring up this if they're going to be a flight risk or not? I mean, is it days? Is it hours? Is it? And how hard is that to do in a short time or whatever time period it is? Because I'm not, you know, in the legal thing, but it seems like this is going to be difficult to prove in a short amount of time.
The bond hearings are held at the very next court date. So we have bond court twice a day, Monday through Friday, and then on the weekends and holidays, once a day.
So if someone gets arrested, say, at 7:00 at night on a Tuesday, you have until you get the press report, and that would be Wednesday morning would have to be?
Correct. So if someone's in custody, we have 48 hours from the time they are arrested to make a charging decision. Either they're going to go to court, charged with an offense, or we're going to have to release them. So it's a very quick turnaround, and, you know, we get as much information as we can. That information is communicated. If it's not the same person that's screening the offense during the bond hearing, it's communicated to who's ever doing the bond hearing, and we are prepared, fully prepared. And as Judge Popejoy pointed out, the public defender's staff, these bond hearings as well, if there's no private attorney, they are extremely prepared, and these are very robust proceedings that occur right now. But there is a very small time window. And just to make it clear, we can only present and argue what the evidence is. We're bound by ethical considerations, and that's what we do.
And what's a willful flight risk? Unless you're standing there with a plane ticket in your hand, I mean, how do you determine that? That seems like it's a very broad and general statement that it's more on you than the defendant. I mean, unless he's in lockup and says, you know what, when I get out of here, I'm leaving, going to Mexico or going to Canada or wherever. I mean, it's very hard to determine what willful is.
As I stated earlier, the definition is planning or attempting to intentionally evade prosecution by concealing oneself. It's an extremely difficult proposition to prove, and the reality is, it just does not exist in most cases.
And in your opinion, as written today, does this Safety Act, as of January 1st, make our county safer?
Not at all. It does just the opposite.
Okay, thank you. And just one question for Judge Popejoy. Does this, obviously, I won't make any more jokes about the judges, Chief Judge. I respect both of you. Does this tie your hands more when it comes to giving sentences? And that was something enlightening today where you said, well, in the past, if you thought somebody should be detained, now the judges are going to put them on home monitoring. That's an aspect I even thought of, and that, I mean, that's going to put even more of a strain on our probation department. I mean, is that, does this tie your hands more when it comes to some people coming before you?
You know, what's important about me being here, and I think the member brought it up before, I'm not an advocate for or against the statute. That's not my role. I'm not involved in that. I'm involved in whatever that law is, interpreting it, enforcing it, and applying it. Will there be differences? There is, of course, going to be differences without cash bond on certain things and the increased monitoring and all the requirements that are in there. But right now, this is the law. If we get some trailer bills to clean some things up, that will become an amended part of the law. And if there's appellate review of various decisions that are made, because all these things have to be court-reported, transcripts prepared and everything, that will become the law. And whatever the law is, we, as judges, will perform pursuant to that law. I can't be an advocate. My black robe prevents me from being an advocate, nor can I tell my 47 judges what they should or shouldn't do unless I'm like Chief L. Jefferson, have to do an administrative order to tell my judges to follow the law. But our role is to follow the law. Should Bob be an advocate? Damn right he should be because he's the one that's responsible for what happens with a lot of these people coming in and out. Should our public defender be an advocate? Darn right, maybe in a whole nother way. Can Professor Van Art be an advocate? She certainly can. I'm not an advocate. I'm here for whatever the law is and what's going to happen when this law is in effect, and that's the best I can do. And I can't even be 100% on that because there still will be some judge that'll think this was proven and another judge that will think it wasn't proven. And appellate review and our probation department doing their evaluations five days later will help clean some of that up. will help clean some of that up. But this is the law. This is the law. So my job on January 1 is to make sure it's enforced and followed in this circuit. We will do the best we can with what the law provides. We'll have the tools, what the law provides. We are limited by the tools. We call it what the law is.
Member Covert.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, state's attorney Bob Berlin, Chief Popejoy. That was an incredible, objective, and very truthful clarification of the current, of the law that will take the Safety Act. I had a question, and I did, I too, express some concerns about last week's presentation. It was, I agree, it was a little concerning and offensive. Quick question with the definition of willful flight and its difficulty in proving intentional evasion of prosecution. How can the state ever get the defendant to appear in court or be brought to justice? I'm just, you know, the gears are kicking in my head, and eventually, if they keep not appearing in court, I mean, they can never appear, you know? And what can be done about that? How can we eventually get them to appear in court and bring them to justice under the new law?
It's, when they're released, it's going to be an issue if they don't show up, because we have that intermediate step of the summons first, as well as the violation only being a Class A misdemeanor, regardless of what they are released for, as I stated earlier. So it is going to be a challenge, no question about it, to get them to appear. With more robust pretrial services and monitoring of defendants, the research has shown there's a greater percentage that show up in court when that's in place. That will take time before that's in place. But there's, unfortunately, under the Pretrial Fairness Act, there's not a lot of teeth in the violations, unless it's a violation for a Class A misdemeanor or another felony.
We have member Krajewski followed by member Ozog.
Thank you.
You're on the list, yes.
Thank you for the presentation. Our job is to take care of our DuPage County residents. Unfortunately, sometimes the federal government and state government passes laws that really affect the negative residents here in DuPage. Hence why we have lobbyists, both federally and state, and we have a legislative committee to try to help mold laws, change laws, or put in new laws. So clearly, I think we have a two-pronged approach here. One, clearly, which you said, we're not going to be as safe come January 1. So I think from our legislative side, we'd like to make some changes, like you suggested, maybe the New Jersey model. Two, we need to try to understand the impacts of this law, how it's going to maybe create some more danger to our community, and how we can provide the resources needed. So I'm going to talk about providing the resources needed. And I tried to ask this question last week. So my understanding, right now, we have cash bond. Do you know how many proximate people are out on cash bond who have not appeared for their trial right now, have not showed up? Do we have active arrest warrants for? 100, 200, approximate number? Are there some?
Oh, there's quite a few. I don't have the exact number. I do know that when Illinois passed the First Bail Reform Act in 2018, we went to Category A and Category B offenses. The Category Bs, almost all of them being released with no cash, we saw, I believe it was a 60% increase in failures to appear. The first couple of years.
So we have a lot of them right now that failed to appear, and there's active arrest warrants out. They go into the lead system. Somebody gets pulled over, they can come back in. Now, once prospectively, somebody's released on no cash bail, then they don't appear for court. The step is a summons, correct? And so I'm trying to understand, who issues, or is it the arresting officer from the municipality? Is it somebody from our sheriff's office courts that go to issue the summons? Who would be issuing the summons? Is that us, or is that the arresting officer from the municipality?
It could be either. Either would have authority. It's just like right now, if someone doesn't show up, a judge issues a warrant. The agency where the case came out of can try and arrest the person. The sheriff has authority. Or if we have information, they're in another jurisdiction, we can call them and ask for help.
So we have to go serve them the summons to appear a second time because they missed the court, and then they get an active?
Right. If they don't appear on the date of the summons, then a judge can issue a warrant.
And so if these municipalities or somebody decides they're not going to go into the city to try to serve a summons, that's the end of it, right? I mean, if they don't get a summons to come back for another court date, they're just out there.
The case will linger on the call.
So we're either going to have all these cases lingering on calls, or we're going to have to try to go issue summonses for these people to appear. And currently, right now, we have a number of people outstanding on arrest warrants that are actually in lead systems that we haven't even brought back for trial. Statistically, it's going to be a lot more people out there, and there's going to be a lot of cases that are on these calls with nobody showing up?
We, I'm sure we can get the exact number, but I'm confident in saying there are many warrants that are outstanding right now for failures to appear.
Sure, and there's going to be even more, and there's summonses and, I mean, so we're just going to have to quantify that if we don't get a change to this law. We're going to have to quantify that and see what kind of resources we're going to need to, I mean, already bring people back in. All right, thank you.
We have member Ozog, followed by member Hart, followed by member Chaplin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank both of you for being here today. It's extremely informative. I want to commend Mr. Berlin. You mentioned that you have been working with the General Assembly Public Safety Working Group, and you spoke several times about Senate Bill 4228. Could you discuss that in a little bit more depth, and where we're at with the changes that would possibly be brought through with that bill?
Sure. So it's, I don't think it's any secret that a number of the state's attorneys had a hand in the language of Senate Bill 4228. It was introduced by Scott Bennett, who's a former Champaign County prosecutor. It has fixes to many of the problems that I've identified in my presentation. And it gives Illinois the New Jersey model, which, as I stated, New Jersey allows judges in every criminal case to detain someone if the right circumstances exist. We've all heard examples of cases, and I use the example of, let's just assume somebody throws a brick through a window. It's a minor criminal damage to property. They're going to be released on a recognizance. But what if, in that case, the police find this person has a manifesto, or a list of people that they want to harm or kill? Not enough to charge them with another offense, but now this person may be a threat to the public, and a judge should have the ability, in a given circumstance, to detain that person pretrial. New Jersey allows that. The Pretrial Fairness Act does not. Where the bill's at right now, it has to be formally read into the record. It was introduced. I'm not aware of any cosponsors, but the overwhelming majority of the state's attorneys, both Democrat and Republican in Illinois, support the language in that bill. It still eliminates cash bail, but clearly will make us safer because the people who are violent will be detained pretrial, and the others will get out if that becomes the law. I know the governor has spoken about it. Others have spoken about the bill. And perhaps the county board should pass a resolution supporting it. It's a drastic change to the Pretrial Fairness Act. But as I pointed out at the conclusion of my presentation, the New Jersey, former New Jersey Attorney General and a former prosecutor, a federal and state prosecutor in New Jersey, in their op-ed, talked about how their law has worked. And all the research shows that the New Jersey model has actually worked very well in New Jersey. So.
And again, I want to thank you for working with these, with this Public Safety Working Group. But I do hope, going forward, and especially in the next few weeks, that you can also be an advocate for this bill, because it sounds like it will solve a lot of the problems that you've discussed today. And I know you're appearing at several, one particular large gathering on the 13th. I think there's supposedly going to be another gathering in Glen Ellyn. And when you're appearing at these, I hope that you would, you know, ask people who are at this to talk to their legislators and discuss where we can go with this kind of remediation for the problems that you're talking about.
And I appreciate it. I think I've been very consistent publicly in saying that the bill can be fixed. It requires significant rewriting and significant changes. But this is something we've been saying for a year and a half. And unfortunately, we're four weeks before an election. We didn't pick this date. The state's attorneys in Illinois, from the very beginning, in January of 2021, spoke out against this law. I sent the New Jersey statute to James Hartman, the lawyer for the staff, Democratic staff in the House. I sent it to Tara Costa Howard last year. We had, I participated in a Zoom after we charged a rather high-profile threatening a public official case in this county last spring. And we had a Zoom call with the General Assembly then. So it is something that we have consistently been pushing for.
I will point out Tara Costa Howard is my state representative and did vote against this bill. But I really appreciate everything that you both have brought to us today. Thank you.
Member Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney and Mr. Chief Judge. I want to echo what everyone said, and our thanks for the job that you're doing and for the very thorough description of the Safety Act, and obviously, very sobering information. The question I have, and I know it's somewhat of a crystal ball question, so use your own discretion in it, but in terms of the implementation of the Safety Act, if it is not fixed with the changes that you've laid out here, how do you foresee this impacting both of your budget needs, specifically personnel moving forward? I've heard about a number of different process changes that are required, and I'm curious what that, what that means for your ability to basically staff your office and address these implementations.
So if you just look at, again, the Manhattan Institute study, which just came out in two years since the 2019 bail law went into effect in New York. And New York's law is really very similar to the Pretrial Fairness Act. They had, their index crimes rose 36.6%. If we have a similar increase of 36.6% here in DuPage County, that's going to really require another third more prosecutors. It's a significant, significant increase. And we're, we are remodeling the 503 building. Public defender is moving into a larger space. We're staying in the same space, but it's being reconfigured to help bring in more prosecutors. But if we need more than that, we're going to run out of space. And it's going to be, it's going, going to be a real problem. Which, again, is why the 100 of the 102 state's attorneys are very united, without regard to politics, to do everything we can to prevent the law as currently written from going into
Okay, we have next on the list, member Chaplin.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, thank you for being here today. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you so much for being here today. Appreciate coming in and talking to us and giving us the overview of the Safety Act. A couple of things I want to talk about. I know I've been hearing a lot of officials talking about trespassing, and that they cannot remove a person, and that, you know, they're going to have to train people how to defend their properties. But I understand that the Illinois Supreme Court's Implementation Task Force officially advised law enforcement that they do have discretion to remove a person from a location of the alleged criminal activity, and then cite and release the person from another location. Repeated refusals to comply could then be interpreted as being a threat, and then the officer could arrest that person. And I understand this was issued from the Illinois Supreme Court's Implementation Task Force. Are you aware of that?
I am aware of it. It's a serious issue that law enforcement has. The problem is, the law says, is currently drafted, obvious threat to the community. And there's no definition of what that term means.
Okay, even though the Supreme Court has advised law enforcement, they can remove a person who does not comply with their orders, deem them a threat, and then arrest them and remove them.
Okay, I understand what the Supreme Court has said.
Yes.
But I can tell you this, if, when, there's a body of case law that when the police detain someone, when they put hands on someone and prevent them from moving about, they are arrested. They're under arrest. Whether they're in handcuffs or not, that is an arrest. There will be lawsuits interpreting this. Now, how they're going to play out, no one can predict.
Right. But I guess I'm just concerned because, you know, I've seen on some officials' websites that, how are you going to, how are you going to defend yourself? Are you going to use your hands? Are you going to use a taser? Are you going to use a gun? And this is, you know, I mean, I really appreciate that you are working with our legislators to make this better. But then when I hear other people out there saying, you know, "How are you going to defend yourself when this becomes a law, you know, encouraging, scaring people to the point where they're telling them, 'Are you going to get a taser? Are you going to get a gun? How are you going to defend yourself?'" When I think, you know, maybe you need to tweak this a little bit, but the Supreme Court has advised law enforcement that they can remove a trespasser if they do not comply with their orders, and they are, they are deemed a threat, and then they can be arrested. So I just, I think it's very important that we don't inflame the situation and make it worse on January 1st, you know what I mean? And tell people to kind of keep calm, and let you all do your work with the legislators to try to improve this. And also, from what I understand, a prosecutor can file a petition anytime to have anybody detained, if they can have the evidence. Is that correct? That you can, every, prosecutors still have the ability to file a petition to detain an individual if they deem them a threat or a flight risk in any one of these categories?
Okay, so the answer to that question is, only if it's a crime listed in 110-6.1A1 through A7. Went through all of those crimes? Yes, we can file petitions, but only in those cases. There are a number of crimes that are not listed in the statute, where we don't have the authority. And as I went through, many of those offenses, we could file a petition alleging they're a threat to a specific person or persons. But for other crimes, we can only allege they're a willful flight risk. And again, for other crimes, all the Class 4s, we cannot file a petition.
Okay. And then, my other question was, oh, these lawsuits, this lawsuit, I know that some state's attorneys have filed a lawsuit because they're so adamant against it.
100 state's attorneys.
They did not, 100 didn't file a lawsuit. Did you all file the lawsuit?
No. 100 are opposed to the Safety Act.
Are opposed, yes.
Sorry.
And.
I'm not sure. I think, I think we're going to end up with somewhere around 50 for now that have filed lawsuits.
Filing lawsuits.
50 out of 102.
And, but they have not filed them yet? The only three have filed them so far?
No, I think 11, I believe 11 have filed, and some may have filed while we're standing here today. Some may have filed on Friday.
And we have, I mean, I know, I have seen, I know that in DuPage even, we have set bond for people that have drunk, driving arrests. And I know it's not our county, but I, this is one recent example that I always prefer to. In Lake County, there was a young man, 20 years old. He was found with a loaded gun near a crime committed in the forest preserve out there. And he made bail. He was released on $100,000, I guess his bond wasn't known. He released, was released on the $100,000 bond money that they paid, and he was out. So I don't know necessarily that bond is actually protects us all the time, you know, always protects us, because some people do get out on bond and then go commit crimes as well. That's true. It happens, correct, right? When people are out on bond, they commit crimes too?
In this county, people get out on bond a lot, especially when they're high bonds. So, you know, to answer your question, myself and many of the state's attorneys in theory are not opposed to eliminating cash bond, but we're not opposed to eliminating cash bond only, only if we have a strong preventive detention statute like they do in New Jersey.
Okay.
And unfortunately, the Pretrial Fairness Act does not give judges that discretion in cases. In fact, it removes their discretion in a large number of cases. That's the issue.
Well, from what I've been hearing, there is, there are, there is no such thing as a non-detainable offense.
So I disagree with that respectfully, and I went through a list of them.
Right, right.
Your Class 4 felonies in many of the misdemeanors, not domestic battery, but many of the other misdemeanors. Your Class 4 felonies in many of the misdemeanors, not domestic battery, but many of the other misdemeanors, they're not detainable because they're not under 110-6.1, and they're Class 4s.
But if they, but if you can prove that they are a threat or a risk, can you then detain?
They're still not detainable. Again, they have to fit into 110-6.1. It has to be listed in that statute. That's the problem, and that is, that's what we've been talking about.
Well, again, I just want to thank you for your work on this. I want to thank you for working with our legislators. And, you know, like I said, when you're out, I mean, if, you know, I hope that when you're hearing other officials tell people, you know, ask them how they're going to defend themselves and how they're going to get prepared for January 1st, that it's important to keep the calm and let people know that you're working on this and that you're trying to make it better. And I do believe that there are some good points in the Safety Act, including, you know, mental health training for our police officers, the body cameras, which you said have been very helpful to law enforcement, making your cases stronger. So there is some good in this as well, and I do appreciate you working with our legislators to try to make it better.
And I appreciate your comments, Member Chaplin, I do. And again, I want to be clear, I have tried to stay very factual about this and stay out of the political fray. And unfortunately, the reality is, as everyone knows, we've got an election coming up, and it is a political issue. There's no denying that. But I do believe it's important that the public hear the actual facts, which is why I took my time today with an extensive PowerPoint, so you could actually see the language in the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Garcia.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Chair, and I want to thank you also, State's Attorney Berlin and also Chief Popejoy. You know, a lot of what I wanted to say has already been said, but I did want to follow up on what Member Ozog said, was that you are going down for meetings with some of the state legislators. Is that's correct, correct? I did hear that. So we are talking about, because I mean, I'm seeing, I'm reading about Senate Bill 4228, and it does seem like a lot of the things that you want fixed are going to be fixed in that. And I think that that would be a great change to the law if that's going to be able to make the state's attorneys be able to feel more comfortable with this, along with feeling, you know, with making the judges feel like, you know, I just think, I just wanted to know how many meetings are still left to be had, you know? So do you think you're going to get this, like, some kind of work done on this before January 1st?
So what I can tell you is, we had two meetings last week, each two hours long. There's a group from the House, there's a group from the Senate, Cook County Public Defender is involved. Some of the advocates for the law are involved, the Chiefs of Police Association, as well as the Sheriff's Association. And there's three state's attorneys, including myself, that are part of this group. We have two more meetings set this week, and I've been told we're going to continue to meet to discuss 4228 as well as changes. Everyone should know the reality is that in the veto session, there's a supermajority that is required to pass legislation. So it does become more difficult, certainly not impossible before January 1st, but it certainly becomes more difficult. But that is, I just want to say, that's part of the state's attorney's strategy. Some of us file lawsuits, some of us are trying to work it legislatively. And we've actually all been working together on this strategy with, as I said, without regard to politics.
And I appreciate that. I do appreciate that because I do think, as Member Chaplin, I think we need to keep the rhetoric, you know, factual. And I do appreciate your presentation today. I'm hoping we can get a copy of that. I would love to get a copy of that, although I do have to agree with Member DeSart, that we really don't have anything to say about it on the county board. We just fund in mandates. But it's always good to have that information, just me personally, because I know people are talking to me about it, and I would like to have the information, so I just have it on hand. So I'm hoping to get a copy of that. And then also, to Member Krajewski, he wanted to know about, you know, the appearance in court. I'm looking at the New Jersey law, and it looks like 90% of people released pretrial have now appeared for their court dates. So I mean, so I think that's a good turnaround, you know, and if that's what's going to happen here, I think that's going to be fantastic.
The New Jersey model, as I said, by all stakeholders, all agree, it's been largely successful.
So thank you so much.
Okay, well, I think that concludes the Q and A. I too want to thank our state's attorney and our chief judge for coming and shining some light on this all-important issue. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now, that concludes the chairman's report. We move on to the next item of business entitled "Public Comment." But I'm going to indulge you, if I may, let's take like a four-minute break, if we could, real quick, and we'll be right back here, if you don't mind. Four minutes with stand-in recess. Excuse me. Was reasonably comfortable, maybe we could resume our meeting? Yep. So, thank you. Appreciate that. A little break. Chad, for the record, would you please do the roll?
Yes. Member Chaplin.
Here.
Member Culvert. Member DeSart. Member DeCiani. Member DeCiani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia.
Here.
Member Hart.
Here.
Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge. Member Schorzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Okay, great. We have a quorum. We were just proceeding to the next order of business entitled "Public Comment." We have one individual who is here with us, present. That is John Flannery, an election judge from Wheaton. John Flannery, please proceed. And as you're making your way up there, I do want to just say for the record, we do have these rules, and we ask for three minutes. Yeah, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm an election judge, and I just came to let the board know that we continue to have an election judge manual, which has a major discrepancy in, between the manual and the training we're provided regarding provisional voting for people who have been issued a mail ballot and show up at the polling place on Election Day. And it, we're being trained that those individuals have to surrender their mail ballot and the envelope before they can be issued a regular ballot. Otherwise, they have to vote provisionally. And the manual does not mention the envelope at any point. And this is covered on Page 6 and Page 94 of the manual. That's all.
Yes, and we've been alerted, there was somebody else here.
My wife has been here several times.
Right, 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 yeah. Have you communicated with the clerk's office at all about this?
Yes, we did.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I don't know if there's any changes or revisions in the offing, but I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. It's important. Thank you very much for participating.
Just trying to prevent chaos at the polls.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that's the only public commenter we have that's here in person, although we do have a number of folks seeking to offer some thoughts via online, and the rules apply to the online folks, just as they do to in-person commenters. Please proceed. Evan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First public comment came from Paul. You're good, sir. First public comment comes from Paul Farber. Subject matter: Vote Safety Integrity of New Voting Machines. Comment reads, "I would like to compliment County Clerk Jean Kazmerik on the new voting machines in operation in DuPage County. These machines using vote-on-demand have no wasted paper and ensure that without excess ballots and polling places, there is a minimal opportunity for voter fraud. As opposed to voting machines that have built-in wireless modems and are subject to hacking, these machines are independent from the internet and ensure vote safety and integrity. Coupled with this is the ability of DuPage County voters to be able to exercise their right to vote at any polling station in the county, which is unique in the state of Illinois, and therefore does not restrict voters to only one location. County Clerk Kazmerik is to be congratulated on the introduction of these state-of-the-art voting machines, which poll workers report are easier to set up and close up at the end of the Election Day than the antiquated machines formerly in use. Additionally, since Jean Kazmerik has taken office, their morale at the county clerk's office has reported to have greatly improved over that of her predecessor." End of that public comment. Next is from Jit Castle. Subject matter: Clerk's Office Web Page. Comment reads, "This Thursday, September 29th, will be the first day for early voting in our county, yet you wouldn't know that if you went onto the clerk's page on the county website. In the tab titled "Upcoming Elections," even today, it says that the upcoming election is June 28th, 2022. The only recent update to the site is information pertaining to the April 2023 consolidated election. In fact, on the Events tab, there is nothing listed for the next 30 days. A county clerk should take pride in every aspect of their elected position. They should work ardently to inform the people of this county. It is a shame that we cannot have a website that will fully and easily inform voters of how and when to vote. Unfortunately, I must assume that our current county clerk just doesn't care about her position. In fact, she may not even care about her department. That's the conclusion I must come to when I never see her representing her department herself at board meeting. It's easy to see why the people of this county are asking for a change when our clerk's principal tasks are done half-heartedly, if at all. Thank you." End of that public comment. Next is from Linda Elsick. Subject matter: Jean Kazmerik. Jean Kazmerik has done a fine job modernizing the election process in DuPage County. She has made voting accessible, safe, and efficient. She is a credit to her office." End of that public comment. Next public comment is from Alice James. Subject matter: Assault Weapon Ban. I am in favor of banning assault rifles." End of that public comment. Next public comment is from Sarah Peterson. Subject matter: Common Sense Gun Reform. Comment reads, "I support a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines through a county resolution. I know that Lake County, Skokie, Highland Park, and Willmette have all passed similar resolutions, and Naperville has passed a ban. This is of extreme importance to me and my family. I will continue to make these demands until there is meaningful change. As an elected leader of our community, you have the obligation to address the matters that are of importance to your constituents. I would also like you to support FOID card reforms and mandated training related to sale or possession of firearms." End of that public comment. Next public comment is from Suzanne, or Susan Bloomberg Kayson. Subject matter: Ban Assault Weapons. On July 4th this year, I stood with my mom and younger son at the Hinsdale Fourth of July Parade, watching on as my daughter marched with the Hinsdale Central Color Guard. None of us knew this at the time, but as Hinsdaleans were enjoying our annual Fourth of July Parade, a tradition in our village, hundreds of people in Highland Park not far from us in DuPage County were running for their lives, were struggling to stay alive, were massacred at the hands of another person from their community. My doctor was at the parade, doing what I was doing, watching his closest family members, including his daughter, march in their parade, until he rushed out into the street, applying pressure to stop massive amounts of bleeding. And soon after, they attached IV lines to people the paramedics couldn't all reach at once. There were many, there were many that were shot that day. My doctor saw things people should never know about, let alone witness. For the sake of my doctor, of all our fellow Illinoisans, for our community and our families, please vote to ban assault weapons in DuPage County. Enough is enough." End of that public comment. Next comment is from Natalie Beglin. Subject matter: Assault Weapons. Comment reads, "I am asking that DuPage County create a resolution to ban assault weapons. As a county, we must take a stand to end gun violence. By banning assault weapons, we will reduce accidents and deaths. Guns are currently the number-one cause of deaths for children. Leaders must come together to identify ways to reduce gun death and injuries. Thanks." End of that public comment. Next comment is from Sarah Robbins. Subject matter: Police supported DuPage County assault weapons ban. Comment reads, "I would like to voice my support for county resolution to ban assault weapons. The time for thoughts and prayers is over, and we must take steps towards change now. Our children are dying at a rate much higher than any other first-world country, and we cannot continue on the path we are currently on. Assault weapons were created for killing. They are not for hunting, recreation, or fun. They were created to kill people. There is absolutely no need for any civilian to purchase or possess one. My best friend was senselessly murdered by an assault weapon. He was coming into a party at a friend's million-dollar home, and someone completely unrelated to him came and sprayed the front of the building in about 10 seconds, leaving my friend dead and other injured. Had this person not been able to spray bullets with a semi-automatic weapon, I am 100% convinced my friend would still be here today. My friend was not just anyone. He was a leader in the community, a mentor, a son, a college student, and an amazing friend. Please do what you can today to protect all of us." End of that public comment. Next public comment is from Catherine DeShoard. No subject matter. Comment reads, "The time for thoughts and prayers is over. We do not want to sit quietly and wait for another mass shooting to occur. Please take action to keep our children safe in school and families safe in the places we frequent within DuPage County now. Please support an assault weapon and high-capacity magazine ban through a county resolution today." End of that public comment. The last public comment is from Rebecca Smith. Subject matter: Assault Weapons Bans. Comment reads, "As an elementary school teacher and new mom, the safety of the community is of paramount importance to me. The continuous stream of horrifying reports on mass murders throughout the county is sickening. As a teacher, I have a daily push down the mounting fear of these armed marauders each time I walk into my classroom. As citizens, we have a right to safety when we go to our house of worship, grocery stores, workplaces, et cetera. It is imperative that our precious children can learn in safety. I strongly support a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines through a county resolution. I beseech you, as public servants, to courageously push for legislation that protects all of us. Let's make it a difficult, make it as difficult as possible for those, these tools of terror to be accessed and utilized for destruction." That's the end of public comment.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. We move on to the next order of business entitled "Consent." There's a motion and a second, and I will read the items into the record. Consent items: A) DuPage County Board, regular meeting Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. B) Payment of Claims, 09/23/2022 Pay List. C) Payment of Claims, 09/26/2022 Pay List. D) Payment of Claims, 09/30/2022 Pay List. E) Payment of Claims, 09/27/2022 Pay List. F) Payment of Claims, 10/4/2022 Pay List. G) Wire Transfers, 10/3/2022 Wire Transfer. H) Consent Item, Change Orders to Various Contracts as specified in the attached packet. I) Consent Item, Treasurer's Monthly Report of Investments and Deposits. J) Consent Item, County Recorder Monthly Revenue Statement, September 2022. There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay. Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Culvert. Member DeSart. Member DeCiani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy. Member Selman. And Member Tornatori.
Thank you. Onto the Order of Finance. Member Chaplin.
Thank you, Chairman. I am of approval of FIR 039122 Resolution: Authorization to Transfer and Appropriate $3 Million in Additional Funds to the General Fund to the CARE Center?
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Culvert. Member DeSart. Member DeCiani. Member Akoff. Member Garcia. Member Hart. Member Krajewski. Member LaPlante. Member Ozog. Member Phillips. Member Pachalski. Member Renahan. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schorzy. Member Selman. Member Tornatori. And Member Zay.
Thank you. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I'm of approval of FIR 039522: Acceptance and Appropriation of the State Court Improvement Program Grant in the Amount of $5,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I'm of approval of FIR 040222: Acceptance and Appropriation of Additional Funding for Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program (HHS) Grant in the Amount of $2,983,000.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I'm of approval of FIR 040422: Acceptance and Appropriation of the United States Treasury Rescue Act Plan Long-Term Care Program in the Amount of $1,167,639.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
I'm of approval of FIR 040622: Acceptance and Appropriation of the Employment Barrier Reduction Program in the Amount of $84,375.
Leave is granted.
Thank you. I'm of approval of FIR 040922: Authorization of Memorandum of Understanding with the APSME.
Leave is granted.
I'm of approval of FIR 0401, or 041022: Budget Transfers, 10/11/22, Various Companies and Accounting Units.
Leave is granted. Member Chaplin.
Thank you. I'm of approval of FIR 041122: Additional Appropriation for the ARPA Fund for the American Rescue Plan Act Program for Townships in the Amount of $210,300.
Leave is granted.
And finally, I'm of approval of FIR 041222: Amendment to Resolution FIR 034022: For the Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with the DuPage County Townships for the Use of ARPA Funds for Local American Rescue Plan Act Program for New Program Total Amount of $3,459,976.
Leave is granted. Thank you, Member Chaplin. Onto the Order of Environmental. Member Rutledge.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everybody. No committee update, but I ask for authorization for overnight travel to ILCSWMA. Overnight travel request for Environmental and Sustainability Programs Manager, November 3rd through 4th in Utica, Illinois. Expenses to include registration, transportation, lodging, and approximately cost to the county of $375.
Been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Rutledge. Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Siani. Aye. Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kudjuski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalsky.
Aye.
And member Renahan.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, thank you, member Rutledge.
Thank you.
We move on to another overnight travel.
Yes. And next, another authorization for overnight travel for the same conference, for the environmental specialists, expenses.
Leave is granted.
$375, not to exceed.
Leave is granted. Thank you, member Rutledge. On to the Order of Health and Human Services, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of HHS R403-22 Resolution, Approval of Initiative Payment by DuPage County to Energy Assistance Providers for LiHeat Program.
Second.
In the amount of $2,565,380.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy. Aye. Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Siani. Aye. Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kudjuski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Ozog.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalsky.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS R40522 Resolution, DuPage Care Center Rate Increase, from $345 per day to $359.
Second most important.
For standard custodial care, from $373 to $388 for Alzheimer's Special Care, and $593 to $617 per day for post-acute care, effective December 1st, 2022.
And a motion and a second. Request for leave. Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P280-22, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Simbria Inc. for Physical Occupational Speech and Respiratory Therapy and Consulting Services for the Care Center, November 30th, 2022 through November 29th, 2023, not to exceed $1,000,000.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of HHS P0283-22, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Simbria Inc. for Community Wellness Partner for Wellness and Outpatient Centers, Staffing and Management for the Care Center, November 30th, 2022 through November 29th, 2023, not to exceed $65,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of HHS P284-22, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract to Pulmonary Exchange Limited for Rental of Respiratory Care Equipment for the Care Center, November 20th, 2022 through November 19th, 2023, not to exceed $57,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of Item 10F, which is a change order, HHS P223A-22, Amendment to Resolution, HHS P22322, issued to DuPage Federation on Human Services Report, Language Access Resource Center to Provide American Sign Language Services, increasing by $3,000.
Leave is granted.
Move approval of Authorization, Overnight Travel, Item 10G, Community Service Administrator to Go to Seattle, Washington, October 23rd through 27th, 2022, to a Data Consortium, $2,814.35.
Leave is granted.
I move to combine Items 10H, I, and J. These are all for Weatherization Assessors to travel in October.
And a motion and a second to combine Items 10H through J. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
I move approval of 10H, Weatherization Assessor Going to Assessment in Champagne, October 23rd through 28th, 2022, $1,986.65. 10I, Weatherization Assessor Going to Basic Training in Champagne, October 2nd through 7th, 2022, $1,932.04. And Item 10J, Weather Assessor Going to Healthy Home Evaluator Course in Champagne, October 16th through the 21st, 2022, $2,377.20.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
I move approval of 10K, Overnight Travel for Community Services Director to Go to NACO Housing Task Force and NACET Executive Committee Meeting in Washington, DC, November 16th through 18th, 2022, $1,261.50.
Leave is granted.
And I move approval of 10L, Authorization for Overnight Travel, Community Services Manager to Go to the Consumer Voice Annual Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, November 13th through 16th, 2022, for about $2,000.
Leave is granted. Thank you. On to the Order of Judicial Public Safety, member Renahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval of JPSP 27422, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Nolan Sales Corporation to Furnish, Deliver, Stall, Interface Carpet and Flooring for the Clerk's Office, Circuit Court Clerk's Office, I'm sorry, not to exceed $220,336.17.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please, Mr. Chad Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Siani. Aye. Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kudjuski.
Aye.
Member LaPlante.
Aye.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
And member Pachalsky.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Member Renahan.
I move approval of JPSP 27522, Recommendation for Approval of a Contract Purchase Order to Public Safety Direct Inc. for Repairs, Monthly Maintenance, and Upsetting of New Shared Vehicles for the Sheriff.
Leave is granted.
October 30th, 2022 to October 29th, 2023, not to exceed $260,000.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of JPSP 27622, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Sentinel Offender Services LLC to Provide GPS Device and Electronic Monitoring Services for Juveniles and Indigenous Adult Offenders and Their Victims.
Leave.
October 30th, 2022 through October 29th, 2023. This is for appropriation and core services.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of JPSP 27822, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to William G. Rohrbeck Attorney at Law, Office of Conflict Attorney for the Court, November 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, not to exceed $47,500.
Leave is granted.
I move approval of JPSP 27922, Recommendation for Approval of Contract Purchase Order to Progressive Communication Inc. for Purchases and Installation of Audio-Visual Equipment and System Upgrade for the Jury Commission, in the amount of $32,759.
We have a question.
Just brief discussion.
Oh, yeah, sure, please.
So during Finance, I had asked whether or not we could use ARPA dollars for this, and I know Jason looked into it and has just an answer for us.
Yes, I was able to talk to Court Administrator Armstrong. This is for the physical PA system essentially in the building itself, so it's not the Zoom technology or anything like that, so most likely no, would not fall under ARPA. However, we will re-review it, but at this time, I don't think so.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okey-dokey. That's good information. And a motion and a second. Is there a request for leave? Leave is granted. Member Renahan.
All right. I move to combine Items 11F, G, and H. These are all overnight travel for the Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Management with no cost to the county.
There's been a motion and a second to combine Items F, G, and H. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay, the ayes have it. The items are combined. Please proceed.
I move approval of 11F for Emergency Management Specialist to go to Bloomington, October 25th through 26th, 2022. 11G for the staff to go to Urbana, Illinois, October 6th and 7th, 2022, is the host agency for State Communications Asset Rapid Comm 4. ILIS has requested that Rapid Comm 4 be brought to Urbana for two days during a course for use during a final exercise. And 11H, this is for the coordinator to also go to Urbana, October 6th and 7th, for the Rapid Comm work.
Leave is granted. Member Renahan, you are completed, and you've done a fine job. On to the Order of Legislative, member Desart, for a committee update.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today, during legislative committee, we will vote to amend the county's 2022 federal and state legislative program to add support for language to firearm regulation, banning the sale of assault weapons, banning the sale of high-capacity magazines, mandate safe storage, mandate training, and to reform the Foid Card. In two weeks, on October 25th, we will hear from our Springfield lobbyist to talk about the video session, which starts November 15th, and we'll also discuss that veterans' legislation, the VAC. So that's it, by way of a committee update. Thank you.
Okay. On to the Order of Public Works, member Ozog.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for approval of PWP 028122, Recommendation for the Approval of an Agreement between the County of DuPage and Clark Dietz Incorporated for On-Call Professional Engineering and Design Services for DuPage Water and Wastewater Treatment Facilities on an As-Needed Basis for the period October 11th, 2022 through November 30th, 2025, for a total amount not to exceed $90,000, vetted through a qualification-based selection process.
There's been a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Ozog.
Yes.
Member Phillips.
Aye.
Member Pachalsky. Member Renahan.
Aye.
Member Rutledge.
Aye.
Member Schwartzy.
Aye.
Member Selman.
Aye.
Member Tornatory.
Aye.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Siani. Aye. Member Eckoff.
Aye.
Member Garcia.
Aye.
Member Hart.
Aye.
Member Kudjuski.
Aye.
And member LaPlante.
Thank you. Thank you, member Ozog. On to the next order of business, Stormwater, entitled Stormwater, member Zay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move on SMR 366-22, Inter-Governmental Agreement between the County of DuPage and the City of Oakbrook Terrace, Storm sewer replacement, amount of $500,000, ARPA item.
And a motion and a second. Mr. Pierce, please call the roll.
Member Zay.
Aye.
Member Chaplin.
Aye.
Member Covert.
Aye.
Member Desart.
Aye.
Member De Siani. Aye. Member Eckoff.[1337.03]